Thank you, Pam. Good morning, my name is Felicia Worth, Hearing Officer, appointed by the Secretary of the Environment Department to conduct a hearing in the matter of the application by Bishop's Lodge for the renewal and modification of Discharge Permit 75, that's DP 75, docketed by the Hearing Clerk as GWQB 24-09. This is the second and I believe, final day of hearing. You may have heard that we blocked out five days, but we only go for so long as we need to. Yesterday, we heard from three of the applicants for witnesses, and we heard from all three of the department's witnesses, and we took about more than a dozen public comments. So today, we will hear from the last of the applicant's witnesses, Mr. Fusion. I'll invite public comment when his testimony is completed, from whomever is here or on the platform. I'll also return at 1:00 PM to accept a public comment from anyone who's here at that point. As soon as we run out of public commenters at the 1 o'clock session, we will adjourn and proceed through the post-hearing process. Is there anything that we need to talk about before we bring Mr. Fusion to the table? No? Okay, thank you. Ms. Moncay? You need your microphone?
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. I would like to please call Mr. Steve Fusion to the stand.
Here.
Yeah, yep. Mr. Fusion, would you spell your first and last name? Into the microphone. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Ms. Moncay.
Thank you. Could you please state your title for the record, Mr. Fusion?
I am a New Mexico Certified Wastewater III and Water III Operator.
Mr. Fusion, did you provide prefiled written direct technical testimony in this matter?
I did.
And Mr. Fusion, is your prefiled direct technical testimony what's been labeled as Exhibit C?
I believe so.
And Mr. Fusion, do you have any changes or additions to this testimony here today?
Not that I know of at this point.
Mr. Fusion, if you were to give this testimony today, would it be the same?
Yes.
Mr. Fusion, do you adopt the testimony in Exhibit C here today?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Fusion, could you please provide a summary of your testimony?
I was asked to evaluate the operations and maintenance aspects of the wastewater treatment plant at Bishop's Lodge. In so doing, I looked at the plant itself physically. I did the tour and I helped in the commissioning. I reviewed the I reviewed the the new TERRA Operations Manual, which is specific to Bishop's Lodge. I reviewed the rules and regulations of NMAC 27-4 and 26-2. I reviewed the discharge permit, the proposed modification of the Discharge Permit 75, and I brought to the table my own personal experience in industry practices and procedures. And I and I concluded that it was all in keeping with the rules and regulations.
Mr. Fusion, do you operate the Bishop's Lodge wastewater treatment plant?
I do.
And how long have you been the operator of the treatment plant?
During commissioning, since late September.
Okay, so would it be a fair characterization to say that you've been operating the plant since it came online?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Mr. Fusion, could you talk a little bit more, please, for the Hearing Officer, about the day-to-day operations and how you operate the plant, day in, day out?
So daily, when arriving on site, we use, you know, the sensory inspection of every piece of the system that comes, you know, it's the sight, smell, and hearing test, and a little bit of touch. So onsite, the first thing that you do is you can smell as you're approaching. So we always roll down the windows about a mile away. So any kind of upset can be detected almost instantly just by the, because you know the nature of what it, how it works. And then we put eyes on every system, every pipe, every tank, the quality of the surface, whether there's, you know, the bubbles are rolling, that kind of thing. Check out all the HMI. It's human machine interface, which is an indicator, which reaches the computer brain, which is the programmable logic controller. And it gives us indicators of all the essential elements that go into making the plant run successfully. We do any kind of as-needed maintenance repairs, you know, given that inspection. And then on a weekly basis, we collect data. We do filterability tests, setolometer tests, which judge the overall health and environment of the wastewater, the colony in the activated sludge process. We check for alkalinity at effluent end, and that tells us whether or not we're nitrifying and denitrifying correctly. We'll check all the piping to make sure there's no leaks, et cetera, et cetera, that kind of thing. Check all breakers and everything like that. On a monthly basis, we do microscopy, checking for the, and this is, once again, we're checking the quality of the bug colony, the microbial colony that does a majority of the treatment of what we're mandated to do by permit. And many, many things. On a quarterly basis, we take samples for record. We do go around and check every nut and bolt to make sure that nothing's loose, make sure that all the wires are landed well, that sort of thing. Take samples, process the samples. Or in addition to all that, that's like sort of the day-to-day thing. We also, I monitor the system personally by remote. So the HMI connects with an overarching telemetry system. And so I have on my laptop, my phone, my tablets, the on-call phone, we can view the HMI as though we're standing in front of it in the plant, and we can also manipulate anything that we can manipulate at the plant from there. So I check that like 30 times a day. And if there are any kind of upset warnings to the set points, I'm alerted by the, I get sent emails, I guess I get phone calls, alerting to any kind of an upset so that we can take immediate action to either, you know, sequester and get a crew on-site or to correct something that might be, you know, amiss.
Thank you, Mr. Fusion. Could you explain a little bit more about the setolometer and the filterability tests?
So the setolometer is judging, it's kind of a, it judges the quality and the age of the wastewater. So in the activated sludge process, we take a liter sample when it's thoroughly mixed, and we allow that, we put it in our graduated right circular cylinder, and as, excuse me, sir? Right circular cylinder. So it's a one-liter container with marks on it for milliliters. And we allow that to settle, and every five minutes, we take a reading of how much the biomass, or not the biomass, but the MLSS, the Mixed Liquor Suspended Solids, settle, leaving a supernatant above them. So a clear space of the water. So it tells us like the age of our sludge, the quality of our sludge, and the quality, age of our sludge directly relate to the effectiveness of the way the water is being cleaned.
Thank you.
Filterability.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, please.
Filterability, we take a sample and we run it through a funnel with filter paper, and we time how much water filters through that and falls into the graduated cylinder. So it's a funnel on top of a graduated cylinder, and we time it and measure the amount of water that comes through at a certain given time. And that tells us whether or not the quality of the environment, the activated, the aerated environment within the MBR systems are such that the filters, the membrane filters can handle, the extraction can filter. So that tells us how quickly or we need to do a clean-in place or a major cleaning, that kind of things.
Mr. Fusion, I know you were not here yesterday, and so you couldn't hear the testimony, but Ms. Young from NMED testified that this plant is a living organism. Would you agree with that statement?
Yes, I would say it's a living colony of organisms, but yes.
Perfect. And so, again, I knew you weren't here yesterday, but Mr. Nasco made the assertion that if somebody was to dump something like toluene into this plant, that there'd be no way for us to know. Is that a correct statement?
No, I do not believe it is.
Why not, Mr. Fusion?
First of all, we would see indicators, we're continuously monitoring the elements of the environment, the variables in the environment of the wastewater that would affect our colony. So we would see things like dropping DO, drop or raise in pH, that sort of thing. We would also, by visually and inspecting, you'd be able to see a slick, right? So if I look into my equalization chamber or my lift station, you can see products, you know, alcohols, petroleum products, that kind of thing, leave a slick, they leave a smell, you know, that kind of thing. I'd also can tell by whether or not solids are floating and the consistency of the solids that are floating, whether there's a dye off, whether there's a whether, say, filaments bacteria is outcompeting nitrifiers and denitrifiers or food, and therefore leading to an upset. So we could probably not tell that it was toluene, but we could tell that something that was toxic to the system had been introduced.
And let's just say, if something is toxic to the system that has been introduced, is there a way in which you can shut down the plant?
Oh, absolutely. So the first of all, there's going to be thickness differences, and within those thickness differences, we have monitors within the system that will that, so in the, I don't know if you guys have seen the exhibits, I'm certain contain layout of the plant.
Yeah, I can pull up for you if that would help, Mr. Fusion.
The post-anox chamber, or the pre-anox chamber, has sensors and floats that would tell us that we don't, the float will lift because the solids will tend to float and be, and become matted. And that'll lift that float, and it'll stop the, what's called the permissible valve 201, coming from the equalization tank into the screen room, where the fine screen, the two-millimeter fine screen, further takes out solids. It will not allow that to come through. So then everything is sequestered at the headworks, and then we can get out a pumper to remove the, any kind of a toxicity thing. Sometimes it, you know, a little bit will get through, and we'll get an alarm for DO or whatever, but then I can, the minute I get that alarm, I check the HMI, and I can shut off pumps, and I can stop valves and keep things sequestered at the headworks so that we don't kill our colony.
So it would, would it be accurate then to say that there's, that there is a way in which to immediately stop something that's coming into the plant that shouldn't be there?
Quickly, maybe not immediately, but very quickly.
And you talked briefly about the remote monitoring system. Could you explain a little bit more about that, please?
Specifically, so the, like I said, the plant is controlled by a programmable logic controller, PLC is known in the industry, that has a human machine interface attached to it. So that the PLC is a ladder logic, you know, code box. And the HMI allows us to be able to see things visually and then translate them into human understanding things. You know, it gives pictures, it gives data, that kind of thing that we can interpret. That data is transmitted to my phone, my, everywhere, my, I have desktop computers, I have laptop computers, I have tablets, and several phones that me and my crew monitor continuously, almost continuously. Like I say, I'm on it like at least 30 times a day. And anything, there, I don't know exactly the count of variables that are recorded, but we have transducers and sensors and all kinds of indicators that are electronically logically programmed to send us things that are outside, warnings about things that are outside the band of set points that we've put in. Those set points are based on the design by the engineers and by just the science of wastewater management of activated sludge to be within a certain band. And the minute we get close to hitting that band, it's typically like a 70% or 85% ratio. So we're not out of the band yet. We'll get an alarm, and it'll send it to us, and it'll say, hey, you need to look at this. And then I can literally drill into it and control it from my phone until I can get a crew on-site.
Thank you, Mr. Fusion. And I have just probably one last question for you. But you had said that you can shut down the plant, excuse me, you testified that you could shut down the plant, quote, "pretty quickly." When you say "pretty quickly," is that a matter of minutes, hours, days?
Minutes, and sometimes less than a minute. I mean, if I'm looking, so I get the alert on my phone, gives me a horrible ringing alarm thing, and I, then I punch in. Sometimes it takes 45 seconds to a minute to, for the, to go through the levels of sign-in, and then all I have to do is hit the button, it's on the first screen. And I navigate the screens all the time, so I know where everything is. And so when the alarm comes through, it gives me a code, and I'm certain that I know where that code is, I know what that's associated with. Everything's numbered, and so like, I was talking earlier about the post-anox and the equalization chambers.
Mr. Fusion, I can stop you, it's okay, I put a schematic up for you.
So the pre-anox tank, that's a 400 thing. So if the alarm says LLAL4 something, I know it's in that tank. Does that make sense? It's in that part of the system. LLAL3 is going to be in the equalization tank. LLAL2 is going to be in the fine screen. So I just, I know, and I can go straight to that. There's a, there's a, just a punch-in log, you know, a drop-down menu for the screens, and I go right to there, and then I can control all pumps and valves and blowers and everything from remote. And I can turn them off immediately, or I can turn the whole system down by the front screen. Actually, the system can be shut down from any of those screens.
Thank you, Mr. Fusion. I have nothing else. Madam Hearing Officer, I will pass the witness.
Thank you, Ms. Moncay. Ms. Weatherly, do you have questions with Mr. Fusion? Ms. Weatherly said no. Mr. Nasco, any questions?
Good morning, thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. Good morning, Mr. Fusion. A few, just a few follow-ups, if I may. I want to go back to your testimony about this sight, smell, and hearing protocol that you use. And if I understand correctly, that you use that to determine if something outside of the normal constituents of liquid waste has entered the system.
Partly, yes.
Let me, if I could, please, I'd like to hand you Exhibit E2. You can use my copy. And that is an exhibit introduced yesterday by your council. And it's a whole environmental analytical report of metals. And I'm just curious, you'd have to undergo analytical testing to determine if those metals were present.
Objection.
Hold on, what was the question, Mr. Nasco?
You would have to undergo analytical testing of the effluent to determine if those metals were present. Am I correct?
Madam Hearing Officer, Mr. Fusion did not talk about analytical testing anywhere in his testimony, and he did not testify at all about heavy metals. That was Mr. Leader.
Okay, so how do you connect this to Mr. Fusion's testimony?
It's pretty simple, Madam Hearing Officer, if I may. Mr. Fusion just testified that he uses sight, smell, and hearing to detect if something is in the waste stream that normally wouldn't be there. So I'm asking him, I've just put in front of him their own exhibit which shows that metals from whatever source have entered the waste stream. I just want to know, in order to confirm that, we'd have to undergo analytical testing of that fluid.
I understand. That's overruled. Go ahead, if you can answer the question, Mr. Fusion.
Yes.
I'll pass the witness, Madam Hearing Officer.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Ms. Moncay?
Nothing. Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer.
Thank you very much for your testimony, Mr. Fusion. All righty, is there anything further by way of technical evidence? Yes.
I'm sorry, Madam Hearing Officer, I just need to admit the exhibits for Mr. Fusion.
Oh, yeah, C.
If I may please, Madam Hearing Officer, I would like to admit Exhibits C through C8.
Any objections?
No objection.
All right, thank you. C through C8 are admitted.
Thank you, Madam.
Okay, now, anything further by way of technical evidence? From any party? No? All right, so we have completed that portion of the record. We can now wrap up with public comment. Is there anyone in the room who would like to offer public comment at this time and who's not already spoken? I have Dr. Quinn Evans. Would you like to offer comment now? Terrific, come up to the table, please. It does not, so long as there's a microphone in front of you and you can make the button green. If you would, please spell your first and last name.
Quinn Evans, Q-U-I-N-N-E-V-A-N-S.
All right, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll start the stopwatch, and I just ask you to keep it around three minutes.
All right. My name is Quinn Evans. I came to New Mexico in 1977. For most of the last 48 years, I have lived in Tuskegee. Water is our life. The community in Tuskegee, and indeed the Bishop's Lodge itself, would not exist but for the Tuskegee Creek and the aquifer that runs through the entire valley. This pure water is why we can live here. It is a travesty if Bishop's Lodge is held to a weaker standard than the individual homeowners. Yet this is what is happening. As money and power accumulate, so should the responsibility to the greater good. Please do not let this out-of-state corporation dump on our community to maximize their profits. There needs to be adequate leach fields situated well above the water table. We need a ban on hazardous waste. There needs to be testing of the wastewater before it is released. There should be an impact study of what these releases will do to our soil, water, and private wells. There needs to be a monitoring plan that will actually protect the residents of the community and not just make a show of it. There are solutions that can protect Tuskegee's aquifer and still provide a profit to Juniper Capital. There just needs to be the will to demand them. We Tuskegee residents have proven that we're willing to stand up and fight for our water. It is a mistake to assume that the legal fight is the end of this. We will continue to protest this until Juniper Capital behaves responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. Vivette Hunt? Okay, oh, and I do see that note, thank you, along with Joanna Angie, also at one. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to offer comment now, sir, if you would come up?
David Doherty, D-A-V-I-D, D-O-U-G-H-E-R-T-Y.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
I'm always about, try to look for solutions, and the pueblo alluded to a solution. And there is a corporate neighbor to the west that provided a solution, and that is Monte Serena. And what they do is they pump their sewage to the city of Santa Fe, which is best equipped to handle such sewage. So that's my two cents worth.
Very much, Mr. Doherty. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to offer public comment at this time? They say, oh, come on up. You would state and spell your name, please.
My name is Jody Morris.
Jody Morris. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. I'll start your time.
I am Jody Morris. I am an owner and resident of Bishop's Lodge Hills and Villas. And like my Tuskegee neighbors, I care deeply about environmental matters, including water. The sewage from our Bishop's Lodge Hills and Villas neighborhood is treated by the Bishop's Lodge Water Treatment Plant per our shared facilities agreement between our neighborhood and Bishop's Lodge Resort. And that means I have a vested interest in understanding the specifics of the Lodge's new water treatment facility because it not only impacts the health of my community, but I'm personally financially investing in the system. And so are all of my Bishop's Lodge Hills and Villas neighbors. And when you invest money in a project, you pay attention. You read documentation, including the details. You spend time to tour the water treatment facility yourself, as I and my neighbors have done. You ask questions of experts. You don't simply rely on the claims of others. You do your research, and you ask to see testing results. And over the last year, I learned my neighbors in my neighborhood do the same. Yesterday, hearing that the major concern from my fellow Tuskegee residents is that we me and my Hills and Villas neighbors might be throwing hazardous wastes like turpentine, medical, industrial waste down our drains. It sounds insulting. And it's also against the law. So let me testify that I have not and will not dispose of waste other than normal domestic sewage in toilets, sink and shower drains, washing machines or dishwasher drains, or other sewage combiences. This is normal domestic waste. It's subsequently treated by the Bishop's Lodge Waste Water Treatment Plant. And I am happy to see that plant exceeding New Mexico legal standards. Today, I know much more about water treatment, more than I ever thought I'd have to know. And I'm proud to have invested in a state of the art technology that serves our Tusukie community going forward. I've learned a lot about the Bishop's Lodge history over the years. And one of the things that the Lodge has always prided itself on is investing in leading technology and community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Did I see another hand over here? Come on up, please. If you would spell your first and last name.
Um, Micheline Devores, M I C H E L I N E, last name D E V A U R S.
Thank you. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
I'll start your time.
I want to make four, oh, I'm a homeowner above Bishop's Lodge. Although retired, I am trained as a hydrologist with a master's degree from Utah State University and agree with the experts who have testified on behalf of the Lodge and the New Mexico Environment Department. I want to make four points. First, our household wastewater discharge is nothing but household waste. Second, Bishop's Lodge must be held to the same standard as others applying for wastewater discharge permits. Third, Protectusuki needs to use other methods rather than holding the Bishop's Lodge permit hostage to accomplish their goal of stricter groundwater and surface water standards. Finally, looking ahead, we need to work to build a, a community. Okay, first, I'm a homeowner above Bishop's Lodge. I can certify that we only discharge household waste. We do not and will not in the future discharge PFAB, turpentine, medical waste or pharmaceuticals. Second, Bishop's Lodge should be held to the same standard under NMED regulations as any permaTe. It should not be held to a higher standard. Or to clarify, all applicants for household wastewater treatment system discharge permits in New Mexico must be held to the same high standards as those used in NMED's evaluation of Bishop's Lodge DP dash seventy five renewal application. Please appreciate that the Lodge received its first NMED leach field discharge permit in nineteen seventy nine. Until today, this permit has been renewed every seven years for the past forty six years with no issue. The current debate for a permit similar to past permits is unfounded and unprecedented. Both Tusukie residents and others concerned about this issue should appreciate that in the past, the Lodge's leach field has not contaminated Tusukie water, since the activists claim they have great water quality now. It is so ironic, they should be so concerned about the Lodge because their houses in Tusukie Valley use unregulated septic tanks and leach fields. Also, the facility for which Lodge is currently requesting a permit treats to Class One A, which is much cleaner water than previously disposed to the creek. This should not be an emotional issue based on fear and lack of understanding. This issue should be addressed using facts, science and applicable laws, not scare tactics. Third, if Protectusuki wants more stringent groundwater or surface water laws and regulations, there's a process to do that. It is not by vilifying Bishop's Lodge. They have applied for a permit, they're treating water and monitoring their effluent, as you have heard. Please go through other channels, monitor your own septic tanks and worry about what your neighbor is doing to you. Finally, and probably most important, it's time for all of us to build community. We all live in the same valley. I'm a forty year New Mexico resident. I know I wasn't born here as others were. However, I have a vested interest in having a community where we can trust one another. I believe that begins with understanding the science. Come see the Bishop's Lodge Wastewater Treatment Plant with your own eyes, as I have done. Also, don't trust everything a lawyer tells you. Get educated and try and understand it yourself. And by the way, if you think water is the only issue our communities, meaning Bishop's Lodge and Tusukie should work on together, fire is a close second. In conclusion, I support Bishop's Lodge Wastewater Discharge Permit NMED DP seventy five, and I urge NMED to approve it as soon as possible. I urge you to take an expedient and scientifically based approach to this issue and prevent unfounded future delays. I also urge you to work as you can to correct Protectusuki's false information. Only with listening and correct information can we build a well-informed and supportive community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Devores. Anyone else in the room? See a hand here? Let's spell your first and last name, please.
Laurie Byrne, L A U R I E, Byrne, B Y R N E.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
All right, I'll start your time.
Uh, before I read my little short prepared statement, I would just like to say that, um, thirteen years ago, my husband and I were living in Austin and decided to take a road trip. And someone said, go to Santa Fe. And we're like, where's that? And we decided to stay at the old Bishop's Lodge and fell in love with Tusukie Creek, Tusukie and the whole area. Well, little did I know that I would be the lifelong Texan living only in this area. So Tusukie is really important to us, although we do have a house at Bishop's Lodge. My name is Laurie Byrne, and my husband David and I have owned a villa at Bishop's Lodge and also recently built a home in the Bishop's Lodge Hills and Villas subdivision. My husband served on the board of both the villa and the HOA of Bishop's Lodge. I believe in following the science and Bishop's Lodge has proven, it seems on all accounts, to be following the science, rules and regulations by the state, it's supposed to say New Mexico, I said Mexico, by the state of New Mexico, in developing the state of the art water treatment facility. Furthermore, the new treatment plan was designed and built to NMED specifications. And the testing results of the facility are showing that it not only meets water clarity and purity goals, but that it actually exceeds those goals. It is also of great concern that our beautiful neighborhood corridor along Bishop's Lodge Road leading into Tusukie is littered with inaccurate signage that are attached to our city and county electrical poles. We also have to deal with weekly protesters across from Bishop's Lodge every Saturday morning that slow traffic flow along the road and into the entrance of Bishop's Lodge. It seems very dangerous as people are standing very close to the road. I personally look forward to a fair ruling, so we can all move forward and work together as a community with our neighbors in Tusukie. In closing, my husband and I are confident that the Bishop's Lodge Water Treatment Plant has been built to meet and exceed the specifications of NMED. And we look forward to the final approval by NMED. I would like to end that I have been a, let me see, middle school, elementary, high school counselor. So I've dealt with a lot of conflict and conflict resolution. My only ask is that the hearing officer, whoever makes the decision, makes a fair decision for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrne. Do they see another hand? Oh, yes. Come on up. If you would state and spell your first and last name.
Yes, I'm David Schlesinger, S C, David, D A V I D, Schlesinger, S C H, L E S S, I N G E R.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Start your time.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer, and thanks for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a twenty-five year Tusukie resident living on Rio Tusukie, benefiting from the Asequia and our pristine drinking well. After hearing yesterday's presentations, I was thinking about what should I speak about today? There's really a lot of ground covered and a lot to talk about. And I agree, there's been a lot of rhetoric that's inappropriate on both sides. And I agree that we should all sit together and try to solve this problem through an alternative solution that is not on the table now, but I think that there is no reason to demonize both sides. And it's really just a waste of taxpayer dollars, our legal fees and other monies and time and resources. And it's time to get beyond that. Bishop's Lodge will be here long after all the people sitting in this room are gone, including myself, most likely. And there will be a solution. And it will be a much better solution for the community if it's something that we could all agree upon. And there is no reason, we heard from the pueblo, some great suggestions and alternative ideas. There is no reason that that cannot be done, in my opinion. I also realize that Bernadette yesterday and the pueblo so well presented the community, its needs, its interests, and why we are all so passionate about this issue. And I don't think I could go much further than they do. And they did, I should say. I also heard that this hearing should be about the law and the science. Great precepts, I think we all agree, very important. Firstly, we all know that we don't totally agree on what the law should be. Some of that's already been decided. But we all hope that that can be, that can be decided in a way that might be closer to what was originally intended in the legislative, uh, in the legislative regulations, uh, which speak to the health and safety of the community, its water, land and air. And I don't think that'll be decided i- in this courtroom. So we'll put the law aside. Let's talk about the science. Personally, I was quite, quite impressed by the technical experts of Bishop's Lodge and NMED, as well as their passion for the work. I was actually surprised how passionate some of the people in this room were about the work that they've done. I was so impressed by not only the knowledge of the technical experts, but actually as well as the, the state of the art technology designed for Bishop's Lodge. Very, very impressive. And I think we could all sleep out of knowing that we have these experts, we have this technology. There's no question about that. I don't think anyone's arguing that that's quite impressive. But then, we also heard that there really was no way for them to test for all possible contaminants. Heard today that, you know, that their sight, smell, sense, other senses would be used. I have no doubt that the people in this room, under these conditions, will be able to discover any problems that come up. What we're thinking about is years down the road, when these people are not involved. In fact, I was a little surprised how much human, uh, management and judgment has to be employed here. And of course, everyone here, I'm sure is gonna, this is gonna run as smoothly as possible. But with these people involved, but all these players won't be here, all these systems aren't, can always stay the same. You know, there are budget cuts, there's human error, there are other things. That's what we're concerned with. We're not questioning all the presentations that were so very, very impressive. We then heard that one of the speakers said they looked at five different treatment plants, but they hadn't really noticed if there were any downstream drinking wells. Well, that was a little surprising. Maybe those neighbors were on municipal water. Maybe they're, had different needs than our community have. Then I also heard the scientists or technical experts, rather, were very reluctant to admit that there were hundreds of downstream wells from the Lodge that could be impacted. And I said to myself, isn't, that seems pretty obvious. We should at least admit that. But it wasn't, it seemed a little difficult for them to do that. And I said, all we have to do is look at the funnel topography. It's very obvious, if you look on the model, where the water is going to flow, where the aquifer is going to flow, who's going to bear the risk, not the, not the potential, uh, contaminants, but the risk is going to be borne by the downstream neighbors.
Would you please wrap up?
Well, I'll try. I don't think I'm gonna quite make it, but, uh, you could cut me off at whatever point you like. I'll try to speed it up. But just walk the land, look at the top topography. As one of our favorite Nobel laureates, laureates said, you don't need a weatherman to know which way the wind's gonna blow. So it's pretty obvious who's bearing the risk here. What about our hundred year floods, which seem to happen every two to three years? What about the horses that were caught in the recent flooding? One of which ended up in a neighbor's backyard that he had to dispose of. What happens when there is a crisis, when some of the people here may not be involved? It's not just the science, there's risk. No one in Santa Fe or Tusukie likely believes that human error, you know, things don't happen over time, they can't be corrected. That, that can't be corrected then. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when. There's the community, the land, our trees, our water. Skip over some parts here to get to the end. So I was just struck by when the, the pueblo's comments, when they were told, when we got, when we moved here, we were told the water that flows through our property is not our water. We couldn't divert it. It's their water. And we were told that we had that collective responsibility. I think all people, whether they're living in the Tusukie community, in the Lodge, in the Hills and Villas, should all share a collective responsibility to the land that's been here before us, will be here after us, and we owe to our future generations. And I'll just end with this. Thought I was in a conversation with a pueblo member last fall. And he said he was dismayed about how this, things were evolving here. And the final thought he said to me was, water is life. I'll end on that note, sorry for going over.
Thank you, Mr. Schlesinger. Um, let me know also, in the event anyone has anything to add to what they've already said, um, uh, or would prefer to put their comment in writing, uh, please, uh, do so and email it to Pamela Jones or Luis Lopez, who are up here. And, uh, we'll, uh, we'll leave the, uh, record open until five o'clock today for, for any comment like that. Sir, if you would like to come up, yeah. Did, did I hear from you yesterday or no? Okay. If you would, uh, state and spell your first and last name.
Frank Aramillo, F R A N K, J A R A M I L L O.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, please go ahead.
I am a native New Mexico, New Mexican, been here my whole entire life, five generations of family are here. I inherited my dad's ranch in northern New Mexico between my uncle and I. We run cattle. Water to me is life. I was skeptical about coming up and talking. I'm not a very good speaker and I was not prepared to do this, but I am. I actually built Bishop's Lodge. I came out of retirement to build Bishop's Lodge help. I was one of the superintendents. After that, I became the chief engineer. I have seen Bishop's Lodge go above and beyond to protect the state of New Mexico, the water, the people. It's an amazing, it's, it's a great way to end on my career. I retired, now July thirty first, I retired. I'm a carpenter by trade, I joined the carpenters union for nineteen eighty, worked with James Corporation for twenty-five years, started my own company, Rockin' G. I, I also was director of operations for Santa Fe County. And I got to, I was, I oversaw the judicial complex. Now that was a mess with all the benzene and I was right in the middle of that. Now, that was a mess with all the benzene, and I was right in the middle of that, I oversaw that. Bishop's Lodge has gone above and beyond than our government ever did, and I'm sorry to say that, but it's the truth. And like I say, I have been involved in every step that Bishop's Lodge has taken, I have been there for the monsoons when we get the floods, because Bishop's Lodge was built, and of course, there were some flaws, and when the monsoons came, the water came and flooded the pools, it did, you know, a lot of damage, but Bishop's Lodge has gone above and beyond to fix all this. I live in Pecos, New Mexico now, like I said, my ranch is in northern New Mexico, I would give anything to have water flowing down our rivers, our, I live right next to the Galastel Basin, the Glorieta Basin, I'm sorry, and it doesn't run continuously. Bishop's Lodge is telling, is if, if this were to happen the right way, Bishop's Lodge would be energizing the aquifer for everybody. And I am very educated in water and filter saving, so people need to get educated, first of all. By the time the water even gets to Bishop's Lodge, it's filtered, I mean, it's coming out, I mean, you showed the water yesterday. You know what, I wanted to stand up and say, "I'll take a drink of it," because I saw it, I've seen it, that's how much, that's how much I believe in this. And my friends, I wouldn't-
Hold on, please, start your comments.
I wouldn't let anybody from out of state come and ruin our state, I would not. Like I said, I'm a native New Mexican, so I'm proud to say that I work for Bishop's Lodge, and I'm proud to see what they have done. And in my heart, I believe and I trust them, because I've been a part of it. So, I'm going to make it short and sweet, and that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hatale. Is there anyone else who would like to offer comment now? There will be one more opportunity at 1:00 PM today, anyone in the room? Oh, sir, come on up. If you would, your first and last name?
My name is Scott, S-C-O-T-T, Carnes, K-A-R-N-S.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, I'll start your time.
Thank you, Madam Hearing Officer. Hello all, my name is Scott Carnes, my wife and I have lived in Santa Fe for 30 years now, we've raised two sons here, and we can't imagine we would be living anywhere else, it's our favorite place. We built our home here in the Hills and Villas at Bishop's Lodge six years ago. Now that I've been sworn in, I need to address my first point. I attest that I have never disposed of household hazardous waste, or any type of hazardous waste, in a toilet or any drain that ultimately connects to a wastewater treatment system. Furthermore, I will not do so in the future. A few weeks ago, I could have made that same attestation under oath, although I was then unaware of the existence of Santa Fe County Ordinance 2014-10, which specifically prohibits improper disposal of household hazardous waste. It's just common sense that a person should not dump hazardous substances into a toilet or drain connected to any type of domestic wastewater system. To be honest, I find it insulting that anyone who does not know me or my neighbors would insinuate that we are likely to do such a thing. That accusation does nothing to promote goodwill or trust among the broader community. I've learned a lot in preparation for this hearing, it includes some very interesting things. One of the most startling discoveries, given the current uproar over its renewal, was learning that the public notices that had been posted for applications for renewal of DP-75, applications that requested authorization to discharge up to 50,000 gallons per day of effluent. Those notices were first posted in December of 1998, and regularly thereafter, to the final such notice for authorization to dispose of up to 50,000 gallons per day in 2016. From those dates, I think it is safe to say the Lodge was disposing up as much as 50,000 gallons of effluent per day for a period of about 20 years. I don't recall seeing any protests or accusatory signs posted along Bishop's Lodge Road during that time. With that information, and knowing that one of the major issues for those opposing the grant, the granting of DP-75 is the 30,000 gallon per day discharge rate, I have to wonder about the current fervent opposition to NMED's possibly approving renewal of DP-75. And with that, I thank you for providing this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Carnes. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to offer comment at this time? One more opportunity at 1:00 PM, all right. If you are on the platform and you'd like to offer comment from the platform, please raise your digital hand. As I understand it, chat is disabled. All right. Okay, thank you, Luis. In that event, we are going to take an extra-long lunch break. We'll break now and return at 1:00. Thank you.